I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July 25th, 2022. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Hutchinson.
Present.
Mr. Stites.
Here.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Valerie Nosler Beck joins us online.
Hi, here.
Yes.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Rachel Holtean.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Leah Dozen.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all members of council are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilors, in your packet we have the July 11, 2022, City Council meetings. I've been notified and the clerk has that we have several adjustments to the minutes, and with your permission, would like to see these come back to our August 22 meeting. So ordered. Without objection, we will approve the agenda as presented. So ordered. We are now at a public's right to speak. We welcome members of the public to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda during this public's right to speak and for a maximum of three minutes. I have several people signed up to speak, and when I call your name, if you would please come to the podium, introduce yourself, giving us your first name and your last name, if you would please spell your last name and give us your address. When that's, when you're ready to speak, the clerk will put the little timing buttons up, and basically when they get to yellow, your time is approaching its end, and when it turns red, your time is completed, and if you would conclude your remarks. And we will also be offering our online attendees the opportunity to speak. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand in the virtual platform. Our first speaker is Cambria Rollo with Catherine Rudd on deck.
My name is Cambria Rollo, spelled R-O-L-L-O. I live at 6761 West 36th Place here in Wheat Ridge. Councilmembers and mayor, I'm here tonight to talk to you about what I love about Wheat Ridge, to start with. I'm a mother of three young adults, two cats, a dog. We moved to Wheat Ridge two years ago. I love living here. I love grabbing my morning coffee at Stylist and Crate. I love working out at my gym, Spango Wheat Ridge. I love shopping at the local Sprouts and the newly remodeled Apple Jacks, and I love enjoying my favorite beer at our newly opened New Image Brewery location. My whole family gets their haircuts at Banter Barber. We pick up our prescriptions at Wheat Ridge Pharmacy, and I love my weekly walks through the neighborhood with my neighbor, who is here tonight, who also lives in her childhood home here in Wheat Ridge. And I love serving as chair to the Parks and Rec Commission to ensure that we continue to have our fabulous parks and open space that we all enjoy. In fact, most weeks, my car barely leaves Wheat Ridge. There is, however, one thing that I don't love. I don't love that in the past year, we've had six shootings events within a block of my home. We've all seen the increase of gun violence across our country, our state, and our towns, and as a mother, I am sick and tired of sitting by and silently watching our child's lives sacrificed to put money in the pockets of gun manufacturers than our corrupt politicians. I stand before you tonight, and I ask for your support to fight back, to take those steps to reduce gun violence in our city. So mayor, I start with you. Will you please join your neighboring mayors of Denver, Edgewater, Boulder, Fort Collins, Superior, Lewisville, and North Glen in taking the pledge of mayors against illegal guns through every town for gun safety? I've emailed you the link to the website with all of the information for your review. Don't have enough time to cover it all in my three minutes, but I ask that you would seriously consider taking this pledge. My next request is to you, councilmembers. During the 2021 session, Colorado's legislature passed Senate Bill 21-256, repealing Colorado's preemption law and empowering our localities to pass common sense gun safety ordinance to regulate firearms. I request that you support to pass gun sense ordinances for the city of Wheat Ridge that align to that of what we've already seen across Boulder County. Statistics show that these types of ordinances make our cities safer against gun violence. I've emailed you all drafts of ordinances as stating point for this request. I hope you will be bold enough to step up to my plea and put forth these gun ordinances to vote by the city council. Do I believe they'll solve all of our issues around gun violence? No, but we must start somewhere. And right now, I ask that we start here tonight with this request. And if you're wondering why now, now that the federal legislation has been passed, the first federal legislation has been passed in almost 30 years, my answer to you is because it's not enough. We all know it's not enough. It's a good start, but our cities passing tighter gun ordinances sends a very clear message to our state and federal legislators that we expect more and we expect better. So let's start here in Wheat Ridge. Let's work together to do this work and save lives. Thank you.
We typically don't applaud in council, so if you'd please, though, hold your applause and hold your jeers. Our next speaker is Catherine Rudd and Vivian Voss on deck.
And I would say my name is Catherine Rude, just like bad manners, but I'll try to be nice.
Thank you so much.
I am here because of gun violence, and I have been a gun violence advocate since the late 1970s. I had finished my studies at the University of Colorado, and I was out of the country when this incident happened, but I had a very close college friend who had gotten married and had his first child, little girl, and had just landed a job with the Longmont government, city government, and was really thrilled with this position. And he was working in his office, and one of his colleagues, a woman, was very concerned because she'd asked her spouse for divorce, and she was concerned about his behavior. Now, my friend Doug was a good guy, a beautiful man, a caring person. So when her husband came into the office unexpectedly, my friend Doug stepped to be right at her side, and he pulled a Glock out of his, under his jacket, and he shot my friend Doug twice in the chest, and he shot four other people. Two people were killed, my friend, another person, and three people were seriously injured. So, you know, I, of course, because we had a circle of friends, I knew his family, his parents, and so on and so forth, I saw the whole aftermath of that. So I've seen a lot since the late 1970s. I would like to say I strongly support, I didn't give you my address, I just realized, I will give it to you. I strongly support all six of these ordinances. I've been spending time outside of Canada, and you know what? It feels far more free. People have the freedom to go to businesses late at night, to walk on the streets late at night. They don't have their kids cowering under desks. We can do a hell of a lot better than we are. So in particular, I wanted to just say, I want to strongly support the range from the age limit to 21 for purchasing firearms. I used to work at the Sealese U Ranch in Granby, if any of you know that. I worked with our guests doing skeet shooting. So I know that shooting can be fun, but we're in much different territory now. So many of these mass shooters, there's usually some hint of violent behavior, okay? And I know that the recent legislation, they are going to be looking into these younger people's records, but that's not terribly efficient. The most efficient thing we can do is raise the age limit, and also in terms of banning the sale of military-style assault weapons. Limiting those ammunition, the capacity of those ammunition magazines is terribly, terribly important, because these, the way they're being used now, open door, somebody can walk in here, average shooting takes, is at a distance of 12 feet and takes two seconds, okay? We'd be toast. So this is really serious business, and I really thank you for your attention. And I think that's the only thing, other things, a 10-day waiting period, because in my friend's case, the guy, she asked for divorce, three days later, he bought a, he went out and bought a gun, three days later walked into her office and did this shooting, was a mass shooting. And my address is 1631 North Emerson Street in Denver, but I grew up in Arvada. A Wildcats, sorry.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vivian Voss with Mary Drobnik on deck.
Vivian Voss, V-O-S, 6920 West 47th Place. I feel a bit like I need to cleanse my palate before I, after that, those couple of speakers, heady stuff. Last time I was here, I spoke to you about the Wheat Ridge Garden Tour. I was asking for volunteers and announcing that we were having one, when, where, and how. Today, I'd like to at least talk to you about the fact, as chair of the Wheat Ridge Garden Tour and a Grange member, we were very happy with the effort in the fundraiser that we had on Saturday. This fundraiser through the Grange does support groups such as 4H, Feed the Future, and Stevens Elementary, among more others. We had awesome weather, we had awesome attendees, probably close to 125, and I'll have another report on how much and definitely how many attended. We had awesome sponsors and awesome donors, and we already have people talking to us about their home on the, their garden on the tour and being volunteers for the next time we have a tour. Definitely, I need to give a shout to Vicki Odison and her co-chair efforts with me. But while we're talking about the Grange, let me also mention that in three weeks, we have the Carnation Festival, and the Grange sponsors and holds a Pancake Breakfast, 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 13th. Donations are all you need to come in and enjoy pancakes, sausage, I think, and juice and drinks of some sort. And that's right before the parade, so hope to see you all there. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's a great place to meet Wheat Ridgeans. Our next speaker is Mary Drobnik.
Good evening. Mary Drobnik, D-R-O-B-N-I-C-K. I live at 3695 Holland Street. Um, I, whoops, oh, now I broke it. Can you hear me now? Oh, there we go. All right. I'm taller. I've really been waiting for this meeting for a while because I had an agenda to come in, and then this afternoon, my friend Maureen emailed me saying there's going to be a meeting, this is going to be organized by these wonderful people on gun control and all that stuff. And I just want you guys to know, I 100% support what you guys are doing, I'm behind you guys, and as someone who knows two people who were in Columbine in the shooting and seeing how it has affected their lives and how their lives have turned out, I can't stress enough how much I'm really behind this group here on gun control. So thank you guys for putting that together. Second thing is, I'm a resident, as I said, at 3695 Holland. I live on the corner of the 37th and Holland intersection. Another thing taking lives, as we all know, is hit-and-run accidents that are happening out there. I was recently at home when that accident happened, the hit-and-run happened over at 36th, 37th and Johnson, or 38th and Johnson, where the two guys parked the car on my street, ran through a neighbor's yard, neighbor chased one of them, broke his fence trying to catch one, the other guy took off. I'm not sure if the police caught them yet or not, but they were on video camera, so my neighbor turned it in. But a couple days, maybe a week later, another neighbor found some sort of satchel in their yard, which then contained a gun in that bag, and again, called the police department, they came and picked it up. But they have young kids, there's so many young kids in our neighborhood. You know, Wheat Ridge used to be known as the senior citizen area years ago when I grew up in this area. Now it's become really a young neighborhood out there. I've got so many young kids on my street. They all went through some bike camp this summer, they're all, training wheels are off, they're going through the neighborhood, enjoying it. One of the best things that ever came about in this city was Discovery Park. Those families are going there, they love that park. But my reason for being here today is living on that corner, I can't tell you how many people are going through that stop sign like there's no speed limit there. And I've witnessed bikers falling off bikes because cars don't see them. So my wish here, and I don't know how to do this, I just hope somebody can tell me what I can do to get the ball rolling. I would really like to see on my intersection there either higher bumps so cars know to settle, you know, slow it down, or maybe put a bigger dip in there so, you know, they can slow things down. And because just like gun violence, we're losing people, and my fear is we're going to start losing people on my street. It's a big intersection, it's a bikeway where a lot of bikers come through, and really it's one of the only ones that really lead up to 32nd besides Kipling, and I think maybe Estes is the next street that goes up to 32nd. But my wish, if anybody can just help me get the ball rolling on what I can do to try to slow down some of these speeders there. And again, like I say, it's not just the high school kids, it's a lot of adults in our neighborhood that are, they just act like there's not a stop sign there. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was everyone that I have signed up to speak. If you're in council chambers and haven't signed up to speak, you may do so at this time, if you'd come to the podium, and I'll ask Ms. Schilling if anyone online has raised their hand wishing to speak under public's right to speak.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We will conclude our public's right to speak. Thank you all for coming forward and joining us this evening. We will go now to Agenda Item Number One. Councilperson Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 16-2022, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the Implementation of a Residential Bulk Plane Standard. At issue, currently, the bulk plane regulations apply to only detached single-unit homes in the R1C and R3 zone districts. This ordinance expands the applicability of bulk plane to all R-series residential zone districts. The purpose of this change is to achieve community goals related to neighborhood compatibility and to address resident concerns related to the height and massing of new two- and three-story homes and additions.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item, please?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 16-2022, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the Implementation of a Residential Bulk Plane Development Standard. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, August 22, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, if allowed to meet in person on that date per COVID-19 restrictions.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Councilperson Stites, will you please introduce item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve payment to Axon Enterprise Incorporated for contract services for police-worn body camera equipment and data storage in the amount of $86,880. At issue, the Wheat Ridge Police Department maintains a body-worn camera program for the purpose of audio and visual recordings of police encounters with the public. This program helps to increase officer professionalism, evaluate performance, reduce complaints, resolve officer-involved incidents, and can serve as an unbiased account of documenting evidence in a police encounter.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
The chief is here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Before we go to questions from council, I will invite the public to speak on Agenda Item Number Two. There is no one signed up to speak. If there's anyone here who would like to speak, you may do so now, and I see no one online with their hand raised and no one in council chambers, so we will move on to questions from council, questions from council of staff. Seeing none, we will go to a motion on this, Councilperson Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve payment to Axon Enterprises Incorporated for contract services for police-worn body camera equipment and data storage in the amount of $86,880.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilperson Ohms. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Councilmembers, please vote again. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Three. Councilor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you. Mayor, just a quick sound check, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. Resolution Number 33-2022, A Resolution Declaring Race and Religion-Based Covenants on Real Property Within the City of Wheat Ridge to be Illegal and Unenforceable and in connection therewith directing city staff to take certain actions in relation thereto. At issue, this resolution declares race and religion-based covenants illegal and unenforceable and gives direction of city staff to receipt research title to city-owned properties, draft an ordinance to require a plat note on re-subdivisions, and propose materials to assist private property owners, all with the goal of removing such covenants.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Our city attorney, Mr. Dolls, here.
Mr. Doll.
Thank you, council. You heard a report from me on this at your June 27 study session, and I appreciate your support for it as read by Councilmember Nosler Beck. That's a correct summary of what this resolution does. I previously informed you that both the Colorado Supreme Court and the United States Supreme Court have declared these kinds of covenants illegal and unenforceable. The state legislature in Colorado has, some years back, also done that. What this resolution does, among other things, is to join, have the city of Wheat Ridge join those bodies, those courts and the legislature in making a declaration locally that the covenants are illegal and unenforceable. I found it was compelling to me that, I think it was Councilmember Holtean that mentioned that she had seen such a covenant in the property that she purchased and was really shocked by seeing that. Of course, when something's in real property title, that's a difficult, not impossible, difficult to completely erase because it's a document that got recorded at a certain date, and unless it's to be expunged like a judicial order, they remain there, but we can certainly take actions after that to emphasize that they are illegal and unenforceable. And that's what this resolution does, beyond making the declaration that I think is important has you joining these other bodies. It does give direction to staff to take some concrete actions, which I previously described to you. The city owns property, and the city comes into ownership of property regularly and disposes of property. As a property owner, under the statute that is referenced here, the city has the right to file a declaration and to effectively change the chain of title on its property. And this resolution directs that city staff inventory city properties and look and see if the city has any properties that contain those covenants. And secondly, there are subdivisions, of course, with these provisions on them, and the city can't order property owners to file anything with respect to their property, but what it can do is upon re-subdivision, and we see re-subdivisions frequently in the city, require that a plat note be placed on that re-subdivision that makes note of that. And I haven't drafted that plat note yet, but that's something that we have the ability to do, but that would be, of course, an ordinance that would need to amend Chapter 26 requiring such a plat note, and that's easy to do, and if this resolution is passed, I'll proceed to do that. And lastly, of course, as property owners, in Colorado, we, each individual property owner has the right to file things that would address these covenants, and the resolution directs that I prepare materials that could be provided to property owners, stopping short of, as I think I mentioned at the study session, giving legal advice to property owners, something I can't do and the city shouldn't be in a position of doing, but we can certainly facilitate their accessing the statute for those purposes. That's a thumbnail sketch of what this resolution does, and I appreciate the council's support.
Thank you, Mr. Doll. Before we go to questions of council, I would like to invite any members of the public, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but if you are here and would like to speak, you may do so now, and I'll check to see if anyone online has raised their hand to speak on this, and it doesn't look like that's the case, so I will, pardon me, oh, please come forward. If you would give us your first name and your last name, please spell your last name and give us an address for the record.
Sure. My name is Kathy, C-A-T-H-Y, last name Milkey, M-I-L-K-E-Y, and I live at 7891 West 39th, just down the street. I just wanted to ask a clarification question. I'm here for another item this evening, but I wanted to ask if all protected class language is included, or is it just race and religion?
This is directed at race and religion-based covenants, because we have those dating from roughly the 20s here in Colorado and in the city, and typically, the covenants that we see are exclusively race and religion-based, and that's the focus of this resolution.
Sure.
Yep.
I just was concerned that also if there is any sexual, sex discrimination, that that not be in the covenants either.
It's a fair question. I'll tell you that it's much less common for those kind of restrictions, pardon me, to be paired with these race and religion covenants that were popular, for lack of a better way of saying it, in a particular couple of decades.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming in. Okay, we will conclude our public comment on this item and go into any questions from council, staff. Okay, seeing none, pardon, oh, Councilor Nosler Beck.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to take a quick moment and thank staff and fellow councilors for bringing this resolution and doing all of the hard work. The work that everybody's doing on this is really...
The work that everybody's doing on this is really the sausage-making process of getting to a more equitable and accessible, safer, and better city, and I just am so grateful for all of the time put into this. So, you know, I've expressed a few times with all of you that my family is part of the fabric that helped set our city up, and part of that is owning some of these covenants and ordinances that were put in place over a century ago, but sometimes even earlier in our history. And this is one of those moments to just, as we sit here on the dais and are doing this work and thinking about the policies that we're making, that sometimes it's cleaning things up, but also it's also so important that we think about the impacts down the road as the times change, and we know better, we do better. And so I'm just so grateful for all of you, and especially thank you, Jerry, for all of your work on untieing these nasty, nasty knots. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have no more questions, Councilor Nosler Beck, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 33-2022, a resolution declaring race and religion-based covenants on real property within the city of Wheat Ridge to be illegal and unenforceable and in connection therewith directing city staff to take certain actions in relation thereto.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm actually really proud that we're taking these steps to do this, and I didn't even, I didn't read that deep into the title work of my property. I didn't even know that this existed until Councilwoman Holtein brought this to our attention when we were looking at the Race and Equity Task Force. And so I just want to say thank you very much for bringing that up to us, and I know myself and several other councilors have asked follow-up questions, and so I'm happy we're at this place in the road, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who's put work into this. I shared at the last meeting what my experience was when I was first looking at buying a house here in Wheat Ridge, and it was alarming. I was charmed by Wheat Ridge. I was, you know, enjoying the trail, and I was hanging out at the rec center and occasionally grabbing a bite to eat here, and it was one of those things that in, I was in real estate for 18 years, and I didn't encounter that till I was buying here. So I'm really happy that we're actually taking action. But I want to share a little bit of a personal story because we all want story time tonight, right? When I was in Washington, D.C. this last March, representing our city at the National, oh my gosh, Lake of Cities, sorry, I get the N-L-C and the N-C-L confused. I just, like, I got, I was a little overwhelmed. I'm an introvert. I went to a bar to avoid talking to my beloved peers for the night, and I ended up getting to meet somebody who's a Biden appointee, and his role is, he is the senior advisor on equity for the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and his job is to go around the country and to try and make right what things like this have done to communities. This is an intergenerational thing that actually, like, prevents people like me. If this ordinance, or if these, I'm sorry, if the restrictive covenants had been written a little differently, I wouldn't have been able to call Wheat Ridge home. And so we have a multi-generational effect from things like this, and I think this is a really important first step. But we can't not forget that, like, there are a lot of threads of this that move forward in our history. And so this is a good start, but we shouldn't stop here. We need to continue to be looking at what are things in our past and what are things maybe we're doing today that are keeping Wheat Ridge from being a community that everybody can call home? And when we look at our country's history and our own city's history, it's uncomfortable. I mean, it makes me uncomfortable. I was interviewed by The Gazette for this particular issue, and there are things that are very uncomfortable for us to talk about in relationship to this, and it's okay for that to be uncomfortable, but that shouldn't stop us from taking this step and the next right step. So I just want to let my peers know and our community know that, like, I support us to continue moving forward, to look at opportunities like this for us to reconcile things from our past that we're not comfortable with so that tomorrow we can all rest easy knowing that Wheat Ridge is a place that's welcoming to everybody, no matter what the race, religion, color, sexual identity, and a whole host of other things are. Wheat Ridge is a place that we want you to call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will go to agenda item number four. Councilperson Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to cancel the August 8, 2022, regular meeting of the Wheat Ridge City Council. At issue, the regular meeting of August 8, 2022, currently does not have any scheduled agenda items. It is recommended that city council cancel this meeting.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. Mr. Goff, any further information on this?
No.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any, I don't have anyone from the public signed up to speak on this matter. If you haven't signed up and would like to speak, you may do so now, or I will take any online, and I don't see anyone coming forward. So I will close that. Any questions from council? Ms. Hutchinson, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to cancel the August 8, 2022, regular meeting of the Wheat Ridge City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Not much opposition in that motion, is there? Okay. We will take us now, that takes us now to agenda item number five. Councilperson Holtein, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to contract with Arcaterra Group for final design and construction drawings for the Green at 38th in the amount of $399,909. At issue, a consensus was reached by city council on 2018 to engage a designer to develop conceptual designs for the Green at 38th. Arcaterra Group was hired by the city in August 2018. A comprehensive community engagement process was completed since that time to attain feedback from key stakeholders and the public. Based on that feedback, Arcaterra Group created two preferred design options, which were presented to city council at the May 16, 2022, study session. Consensus was reached by city council at that meeting to direct staff to work with Arcaterra Group to complete final design and construction drawings for the Green at 38th.
Thank you very much. This will be a motion of the council. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Well, just add a few other comments, and also let you know Mark Taylor with Arcaterra is on Zoom, if you have any questions for him. But we do have these funds budgeted in the city's open space budget for the design. When Arcaterra came to city council back in May, we estimated the final design expense would be closer to, I think, a half a million, so we were able to get it a little bit lower, just under $400,000. So we're hoping to get this started ASAP with potential construction could happen potentially next summer. It would have to be worked around the school schedule.
Thank you. Before we go to questions of council, I want to open this up for a public comment. I don't have anyone signed up to speak for this agenda item number five, but if you are here in the city council chambers and would like to speak, you may do so now, or if you are online, raise your hand, and we will bring you into the meeting. And I don't see anyone coming forward, anyone online, so we will now go to questions from councils. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Seeing not, a motion is in order. Councilperson Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve a contract with Arcaterra Group for final design and construction drawings for the Green at 38th in the amount of $399,909.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Hoppy.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody, you know, this is a project we've been working on for our community for a long time, and I'm really looking forward to our final designs and being done, kicking the can down the road on this topic. So I'm glad that we are at this point, so thank you for everybody's support.
Thank you. Councilmember Stites, did you have anything? Okay. Anyone, any further? Councilmember Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking forward to Mark and his team working on this, the construction documents, and I'm getting some people asking me when construction will start, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our regular agenda items. So we will now, I believe, go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will defer since we have a special study session coming up, so nothing tonight.
Okay. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Doll.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
You guys are easy tonight. We will go to elected officials' matters, and we'll start with Councilwoman Dozeman.
Thank you. I'll hold it until after the study session. Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Councilperson Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I did participate in the garden tour with the Grange on Saturday, and it was a good turnout, and everybody seemed to really enjoy it, you know, nice gardens, and it's a good benefit. So it was a good time. Thank you.
And I'm sure good, nice to see a little rain for everybody at, you know, over the weekend, so. Councilperson Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had an opportunity to join you at the ribbon cutting the other day for the coop on 29th Avenue and got a chance to hang out and participate in some of the events that they had going on. A really good time. I got a chance to go through the store and bought some really awesome things, and so as I always say, if you can find it, find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
And that's a great new place to find it and buy it. Councilperson Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the Italian Car Festival at Anderson Park a week or so ago, and I was really kind of surprised that it was a very regional draw. I saw license plates on very expensive vehicles from Wisconsin, Montana, kind of all over the place, and it seemed to be a really good turnout regionally for our city of Wheat Ridge, so thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilperson Weaver.
I'm just getting very excited for the Carnation Festival, and I just want to remind everybody that we've got three weeks, and there is a pie contest, so I'm throwing the gauntlet out there, or taking gloves off, or whatever all of those examples are. Get your pie on. It's going to be a Wheat Ridge new tradition of the best pie that you can bake. So go to the Carnation, help me, thecarnationfestival.com to enter your pie. Thank you.
And that was the gauntlet you were throwing instead of the pie, right?
That's right.
Okay, thanks so much. I just wanted to make sure that was clear in the record. Okay. Councilperson Hoppy.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Holtein.
All right, I'm going to make up for everybody passing tonight, as always. Okay, so a couple of quick, easy things. Okay, Wheat Ridge is awesome, and one of the things that makes it awesome is our Cultural Commission has, for the last several years, done an arts drop, and the Summer 2022 Arts Drop is about to begin. For those of you not familiar with the arts drop, what they do is they stash collectible pieces of art around the city, and it is up to you to try and figure out where they are. If you were the first to find them, they are yours to keep, but you're going to need some hints. Those hints can be found on the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission Facebook page, and this is just a really great way to have fun exploring our city, score some sweet local art if you're the first one on the scene, and if you find it, be sure to share what you found, why it's awesome, and why you love exploring our city. So art drop starts July 28 through the 31st. I am both greasing and sharpening my elbows, so if you think you're going to be the one to find it, you better get on it. So again, that's July 28 through the 31st. The next thing I want to just recognize Wheat Ridge's leadership around zero fare for cleaner air. We were the first city in the metropolitan area to pass a resolution acknowledging that, and we were so successful at it that Denver has asked what we did and how we did it, and so we were schooling Denver on how to lead around encouraging people to enjoy the free transit, and that RTD is offering August 1 through August 31st. And Mayor Stricker, I think you are to thank and congratulate for that. Thank you for your leadership on that. I appreciate it.
I hope that all of our citizens will take advantage of that.
Yeah. My next thing, I just want to acknowledge the citizen who came tonight to speak about concerns around people speeding and not stopping in their neighborhood. We do have a neighborhood traffic management program in place. We are looking to initiate an update process to that. Hopefully, that happens later this year, something I care deeply about, and I think it's something that, you know, experiences like that, hopefully, we can learn how we can do better moving forward. And then my last thing, which is less sunny, but, you know, I was reflecting the last couple of months, we've heard a lot of, I say a couple of months, last couple of years, we've heard a lot of residents come in and speak to the fact that they don't like people parking on the street in front of their house. So I'm going to go on a little bit of a tear right now. The street belongs not to you, the property owner, it belongs to us, the citizens of our city. That is a commonly owned space, much like our parks. It is something we all buy into and maintain. Anybody has the right to park on a street in our city, and we don't necessarily love having cars parked all the time in front of our house, but yet that is just sometimes what happens. And so when we are in these chambers and hearing about different proposals coming forward, the right of somebody to park on the street is the right anybody has, and they can't live there, they can't park there for an unnecessary amount of time, I think two or three days is the limit. But if I'm visiting somebody's house, I have every right to park on the street in front of somebody else's house to go visit them. And so when we are thinking about what our needs are for a city, we should not rest into the entitlement of who parks in front of our house and who does not. That street belongs to everybody, and I welcome anybody who wants to park in front of my street. I hope you turn the music off by 10 o'clock. I go to bed early, but it is not my place to decide who gets to park there, and as we're looking to what our city needs, if we want to see good investments in our city, parking requirements are going to come into play. So I just want to remind everybody, that's my rant of the evening, and on that, I'm done ranting for the night. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We want, I want to recognize our Councilor Nosler Beck, who is joining us remotely. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So just want to first acknowledge that the reason that I'm zooming in tonight is that COVID is just still very prevalent out there and very contagious. And so if you are symptomatic, it's, at least in my family, it was showing up as a pretty simple cold at first, and then people were down for the, down for a couple of days. Please just test yourself and wear a mask if you're going to be out and you're feeling sniffly, because these are the last days of summer, and everybody's really enjoying the summer, and I just want to send that reminder that I'm coming to you because, over Zoom, because we've had COVID kind of rock our family the past couple of, past couple of days. And also with that, I, we did, you know, address some of the race and equity issues tonight with the resolution, but also... tonight with the resolution, but also having counsel available like this on a Zoom platform really hits on that equity and accessibility. As a mom, my childcare was taken away because my, my parents were going to be the ones watching my, my kiddos for me. And since they have COVID, I needed to be able to zoom in tonight. And so just a really good demonstration of, you know, some opportunities that our staff at the city of Wheat Ridge is just stellar at finding ways to make it work for me to still be able to participate as a mom and, and be a part of some really important, important work tonight. So thank you so much to the staff on that, and everybody, keep yourself safe. And the last thing is that August 29th, councillor Dozeman and I invite District Four to come to a district community conversation. We're securing a location, but it will be in District Four from 6:00 PM to, will probably be available until about 7:30 for a conversation with the community. So we'll send out some more information, but save the date, August 29th. We don't have a council meeting that Monday night, so we will be having a District Four council meeting. Thank you. Or not a council meeting, community conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't want to forget our city clerk, Clerk Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brief announcement that I have approved a questionnaire, excuse me, a petition to be distributed by folks led by Mr. Bob Brazel. The purpose of the petition is to ask council to either repeal ordinance 1744 about auxiliary, accessory, whatever, I've forgotten what the A means, dwelling units. They have until the 25th of August, a Thursday, to submit 1,757 signatures. I'll keep you posted as anything happens, but it's unlikely that we'll have more news until the end of August.
Okay. Thank you very much. That just about brings us to the end of our meeting, although we are going to have a special study session after this meeting. I was pleased that councillor Stites could join us and, and many other, other citizens to, to welcome the coop and kitchen at 29th and Dupue Street, which is a, a facility that small vendors can, can sign up to, to show their, show their wares and their goods that are, that are mostly handmade and, and fresh, and, and be able to purchase them there. And we had a great, we had some vendors setting up tents and had a really, a really nice event that, the other day at that location. So it's great to see entrepreneurs in, in Wheat Ridge. We're a very entrepreneurial city, so I think we have a lot of opportunities, as councillor Stites says, to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. So, and I want to, to echo one of the, one of the comments from one of our speakers tonight, and councillor Holtein spoke about it, is that it's summer, kids are out, they're enjoying the summer weather. Please, please drive safely and slowly through our, through our city streets, respect your fellow citizens, and let's all go home safely tonight. So if there's no more visits to come before council, we will stand adjourned. We're going to take a brief five-minute recess and then convene our special, special study session. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to call to order the special study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for July 25th, 2020. We have two items on our agenda that tonight. Number one is the Community Partners Grant Program Committee Recommendations. And item number two is a, is a, an update on the 2E bonds that the city issued a number of years ago. So we will start with agenda item number one. This is our Community Partners Grant Program Committee Recommendations. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. We have some of our committee members here, but I'll, I'll let Mary Ann Schilling introduce this.
Okay. Ms. Schilling?
Hello. Good evening. Tonight we have with us Kathy Milkie and Jerry DeTulio, who are members of our Community Partners Grant Program Committee. And tonight they're going to be making the funding recommendations for the 2023 budget. And then they'll be available for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Ms. Milkie and Mr. DeTulio.
Thanks, council members, mayor. It's good to see you tonight. I'm Kathy Milkie, and I'm here with Jerry DeTulio, and we're going to present the recommendations of the Community Partners Grant Program Committee. You might remember this committee as the outside agency committee, but it was recently renamed to better explain its purpose. The Community Partners Grant Program Committee consists of up to two representatives per district, which are initially self-nominated and then appointed by city council. On the committee this year were seven members: Laura McGary, Carol Matthews, Lisa Rucker, Sheila Redd, Brooke Allison, and Jerry and myself. Thank you to my fellow committee members for their hard work and dedication to this program. Thank you also to Mary Ann Schilling for her, who provided us well-organized information, helpful guidance, and kept the whole process running smoothly. We are grateful for her insight and experience. This year, the program had 23 applicants. Each applicant organization submitted written, written materials, including budget and financial information. The committee reviewed this information and listened to each organization present via Zoom over four Tuesday evenings. After each presentation, we had Q and A with the applicants. The committee rated each applicant and its programs based on five criteria. Number one, identified community need. Two, estimated number of Wheat Ridge residents served in a year. Three, how much the program benefits the quality of life for Wheat Ridge residents. Four, how much the program benefits the health, safety, and welfare of Wheat Ridge residents. And then number five, strength of performance measurements for the program. In your packets is a memo and a funding request summary. As you can see from the list of organizations and their requests, the good work they are doing in Wheat Ridge ranges from helping the homeless, to improving air quality, to providing scholarships for special needs campers, in addition to food pantries and educational opportunities. We learned this year that many funding sources had been reduced or are uncertain, particularly for educational organizations, since their funding is often tied to federal data, which have not been reestimated during the pandemic. We got applications from three new organizations this year, and heard how others have pivoted back to programs that are more similar to their pre-pandemic operations, yet this time with new learning. The Community Partners Grant Program had a budget of $160,000 this year, and our recommendation meets the budget number. We appreciate having increased funding, which is up from approximately $134,000 last year. This is my second year on the committee, and it was a fun experience to meet more of the need. Thank you for that. Our funding recommendation meets many of the requested asks, and then over and underfunds a few of the requests. The committee is proud of our city and of our recommendations. We thank you for this opportunity to help our community. I will turn it over to Jerry to discuss our decisions, and then we are both happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for having us, and thank you for increasing the amount budgeted for this year. I think it went from 133,000 to 160,000 at a consensus last year, so thanks for the increase. There is more need out there, definitely with COVID and a few other incidents happening within our community. The main thing with the committee is that it's good to have a committee, because if we just funded everybody the way they asked for their funds, you wouldn't really need a committee. You can just do it yourselves. And with this diversity of the committee, they can pick and choose what's more priority to them. Like, for example, for me, it's, it's the schools and mental health issues that I lean heavily on donating more or at what they've requested. Other committee members may do something different, but it's an average, and I think Mary Ann could mention how that's worked. She takes the average of all the scores, and then we have a discussion afterwards. But the only thing I am concerned about is that, you know, when I came in here tonight, my jeans were a topic of subject and my boots were the city attorney and the city manager. So we may have to have some discussions about that afterward. I feel like a pair of brown shoes in a tuxedo closet tonight, so.
Hopefully not allowed, not a long discussion, but.
Any other questions or comments for us?
All right. Let me see if we have questions of council. Counselor Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you just touch on the specific over asks for the CASA of Jefferson and Gilpin Counties, Jefferson Center for Mental Health, and the Rising Mission Arvada?
Sure. I'll take those and then let Jerry jump in. So the Mission Arvada is a resource for people who are experiencing homelessness. This is the first year they've applied, and the committee thought in general that their request of $2,000 was a modest request, given the many people in Wheat Ridge that they serve. Not only the people who are experiencing homelessness, but the other benefits from the community we get when those, when that population has better services. And so instead of funding them at $2,000, we agreed to do it at 3,500. For CASA, I remember that they have significant needs right now, particularly related to foster care, and had agreed as an organization to fund their operations at a deficit and pull money from reserves. And so we thought it was appropriate to overfund their ask. I'm sorry, could you remind me what the third one is?
Jefferson Center.
Oh, yeah, for mental health. Do you want to talk about that, Jamie?
Sure. For my ratings, I gave actually the Arvada group less than they asked. And I weighted heavily on mental health and on CASA, especially CASA, because I know what they do at the county with working with youth. So that's where the committee comes in, is I gave more money or rated them higher and gave them more money than what they asked, while other committee members maybe gave them at par or less. So it's still the average. And then the committee meets and decides, and if they see, I don't know what the average was for Arvada, but I had given them less than what they had asked for. But I gave more to Jefferson Center for Mental Health, because they're in Wheat Ridge, and they, they serve us a huge population. And also for CASA, which covers Jefferson County, and a lot of those students and youth are in Wheat Ridge and the Central Jeffco.
And to just clarify on the process, Mary Ann aggregates our data as averages, and then we sit down as a committee and kind of hash it out, so that we can get to the total budget and numbers that everybody feels comfortable with.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Holtein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Dozeman asked my question. Some good things.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I, I appreciate that there is the description of the request, and, and I, and I noted, I had noticed in, just from Councilwoman Dozeman asking the question about Jefferson Center for Mental Health, they, it looks like they are requesting a halftime counselor, a school-based clinician at their school. And so I do know that that's about $27,000 a year, so 13,500 would be for, would pay for that for the whole year. So, so I do support that. I just wanted to ask, I see that we have three, three new, which is great, because that's one of the things, like, are we making sure that, that people know that this option is out there? But I just want to know if, and we lost two that we had before, but we have three new. What are, what are the ways that, that you guys are getting the communication out there for people to know that this is something, this is how our process is and something we do every year?
Sure. I, I think that's a great question, and unfortunately, the committee is involved in reviewing applications. But I think, other than word of mouth, it hasn't really been a part of the recruiting effort. So, Mary Ann, I'd like to defer to you.
Yeah, I'd be to answer. This year was actually the first year that we included in the Jeffco transcript this year, which I think is why. And then, of course, on social media, and I believe we put in connections, but I am not 100% sure on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Holtein?
I did want to, oh, go ahead. Take it back on Councilwoman Hoppe's. Yes, one of the reasons why I gave Jefferson Center in my rating was because they're looking at more in, in, in school counselors. I think you worked on one for Wheat Ridge High School. This one was at a different school. I can't remember which one it was, but they are trying to get more counselors in the school besides the regular school counselors from the district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I don't really have a question necessarily, but I just want to comment. I think this is such an important program that our city does, and I don't know if other cities do this or not, do they? Like this? Like the way we do it? It's awesome?
Some do, but I, I brought it from another city that I worked at, so we can claim it.
Okay. All right.
We did. Yeah, I think we brought this to Wheat Ridge, I don't know, seven, eight years ago now, just to give the citizens some opportunities to, to participate in the budget process. But Westminster does this also. They, they used to, anyway.
Well, I think this is one of the things that makes us really unique as a city, and I think I take a lot of pride in representing Wheat Ridge, because we are a Wheat Ridge that really partners with our organizations who do a lot of the good work that the city itself can't do. And to have a, a community-informed process where we get to fund those efforts is really, really important. And I just want to thank both of you for your service and representation of our community. I've been on a lot of grant review committees, and it's hard. You want to just squeeze every dollar to just say yes to everything that comes in front of you. And it's really hard to have to figure out where you say no, and where you lean in and recognize through your own experiences where we need to say yes more than they asked. Because a lot of these organizations aren't aware of what's available to them. So I just want to, I really want to thank you for, for recognizing where we needed to say yes more than they asked. Because nonprofit organizations don't have all the time to do the research to really be, like, you know, like meet greasing elbows and like, you know, being competitive. They're, they're just filling out the paperwork and crossing their fingers. So I appreciate this, and I appreciate the city stepping up in their communications about this opportunity. And I'm really proud that we, we do this. And when I was heading up the Ad-Apps, and I learned that this was a way for us to actually get some funding. Without that funding, I'm not sure that the Active Transportation Advisory Team would still be a thing in our city today. So I know that in small ways and in big ways, this funding actually makes Wheat Ridge a better place for everybody. So thank you, guys. I'm really, I'm really proud to say yes to this.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoppe?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I just kind of want to echo Councilwoman Holtein's. I really appreciate all of your time. And I, I know that it's, it's kind of a, a, a big lift for a month, and then you don't really do much for like a whole year, and then it's a big lift for a month. But I very much appreciate everybody's time, so please let the committee know that we appreciate the recommendations, and I, I feel comfortable in supporting all of these recommendations. Thank you.
Councilperson Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll also echo what my colleagues have said. You guys have done a fantastic job here, and all of these, all of these nonprofits are very worthy. What's the process for, is it, any nonprofits can apply for this, or is, is there a, a pre-screening process, or how does that work? I don't know. Maybe that's a question for Mary Ann.
Basically, any nonprofit or program, so things like Feed the Future, which are, you know, a program, can apply, and they really just seem to be connected to the Wheat Ridge community.
Okay. I know next year, Ms. Noslerbeck and I have been working with the Wheat Ridge Coalition for Education, and that's something that they'll want to apply for next year as well. So I know that's, that's a really good program as well. So thank you for your hard work. That's awesome.
I just have one quick question. I don't think, I can't speak for Kathy, but I think that we don't need to increase the budget for next year, or I don't recommend that. The 160,000 seem to cover what we have. My concern would be as if we start promoting this program more, and then we're getting a lot of outside of Wheat Ridge groups, then we're going to have to pick and choose and maybe increase the budget. That's your job, not mine or hers. But that's something to think about, is that if we increase the coverage, and we get these outlier groups, like some from Arvada, some from Lakewood, some from Edgewater, for example, that we'll have to look at either increasing the budget to cover them, or make it more restrictive to the Wheat Ridge area nonprofits. But I don't think that's a good idea either necessarily, but at this time. But thanks for all your support, and I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Yeah, I'll speak for Kathy. I, you know, I would just say, $160,000 did feel like a really good amount of money. And in some ways, we are making difficult decisions. There were about 182,000 of requests. So we didn't say yes to everything, but we got to say yes to most things. So really felt like we met the need. And if, if the need grows, I'm sure that the city will address it.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Can we see a show of hands for consensus to move this forward? We have a unanimous consensus to move it forward. Thank you very much, Ms. Milkie and Mr. DeTulio, for, for co-chairing this, for a successful study session and recommendations from your group. So we appreciate your hard work. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And I just also wanted to say thank you for the rec center pass. I use it all the time. That was an unexpected but very generous gift. Thank you.
Okay. Well, you've, you've earned it. So, thank you. We will go then to agenda item number, agenda letter number B. And agenda letter B is a report on the 2E bond program. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, so tonight, we'd like to provide city council with an update, not only on our 2E bond projects, but also the 2E bond fund, and really to start a conversation with city council about a potential extension of the temporary sales tax that was put in place by voters in 2016. I believe there's only one person up here that was here in 2016, Ms. Hoppe. So I, we, I think we think this is a, a good time to make sure everybody understands how we got to where we are today with our 2E bond, so that you can have a educated, make a educated decision on if we should do this similar process for future projects. So as a reminder, Wheat Ridge voters approved ballot question 2E on November 8th, 2016. We called this ballot initiative Investing for the Future, so you may see that or hear that a lot. The ballot question temporarily increased the city's sales and use tax rate from 3% to 3.5% for, for 12 years, or when 38.5 million dollars is raised from this tax, whichever occurs first. I'll talk about, a little bit more about that in a bit. It also authorized the issuance of bonds for four different projects, large infrastructure projects in the city. Those were Anderson Park, Wadsworth Boulevard, infrastructure improvements at the G Line Station, and the Clerker Crossing I-70 access ramps. So in your memo, there is a quick update on each of those projects. Most of those are, are done, or still, or a couple are still in the works. But improvements at Anderson Park, that project is done. We spent over, just over, just under 4.6 million of the 2E funds on that project. Modernization of the Anderson Building, reconfigured the space to allow for additional programming, improved locker rooms at the outdoor pool, improved sports fields, installed new baseball field lights, new access to Clear Creek, but new trails, and resurfaced the parking lots. The Clear Creek Crossing access ramps, that project is also completed. We did spend just under 21 million on that project. We allocated 10 million from the 2E bonds to those hook ramps. And if you remember, as part of our agreement with Longs Peak Metropolitan District and Evergreen Development, the city would pay for the full project cost of the access ramps, but then the city would be reimbursed by, by Longs Peak Metropolitan District for anything above 10 million, which they did. They reimbursed the city in '21 and '22 for that money. So that went very well, and that project is under construction. A lot of new activities going on out there, so quite the investment for the city. The third project is Wadsworth Improvement Project. Construction started on that last October. We committed $7 million from our 2E bonds for that project. That matches, that's the city's match for over 30, 40 million dollars of other federal grants, state grants that we're getting for that project. We're hoping that Phase One project will be completed in another year or so. Phase Two, we're hoping that we can get started very soon. City council did, drew staff to allocate the reimbursement dollars that we received from the Long Peaks Metropolitan District for that project, which we have. But we've also are asking Congress for an additional $4 million for Phase Two of the project. And at this point, that money, that request has been accepted and has been included in the draft Transportation Committee budget, but still has a little ways to go before we know if we'll receive that money. And then the Wheat Ridge Ward Station was the, the fourth project. We, out of the bonds, we were allocating 12 million for that project for improvements to the roads, pedestrian bridge over the, the tracks, that pedestrian trail down to the I-70 frontage road. We, if you remember, we diverted a good chunk of that funding so that we could finish the, the access ramps off I-70 into Clear Creek Crossing. But then the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority just issued bonds this last year, and as part of their bond package, they committed 13 million, I believe. Does that sound right, Janice? Of their bonds for this project, so that we could get these done. But we've also just recently found out that we're, we're likely going to be awarded $8 million from the Dr. Cog Subregional Planning Funds. So that will, a lot, lot, kind of a lot of money moving around here, but that will give $8 million back to the Urban Renewal Authority for another project in, in the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Area. So the projects up at the, the Wheat Ridge Ward Station area are 52nd Avenue, Tabor Street, Ridge Road. Those designs were completed. Those bids for construction should go out late summer. We are finalizing the designs for the pedestrian bridge, the plaza, and the trail from the station area to I-70 frontage road. So that's an update on the projects. So as I mentioned, these projects were funded through the issuance of the bonds in May of 2017. The bonds provided for $33 million in project funds for these four projects. The debt service on those bonds are being paid by the revenue generated from the temporary half a cent sales and use tax. The annual debt service on those bonds cannot exceed $3.7 million, and the maximum repayment cost for those bonds cannot exceed 38.5 million. The temporary sales tax will expire in, as I mentioned before, 2028, or when we raise 38.5 million. We believe we will raise 38.5 million by the third or fourth quarter of 2024. So three or four years early. We're scheduled to pay off the bonds in the year 2027 with a total repayment amount of 37.8 million. So if you, if you pay attention to those numbers, repayment amount of 37.8 million, and we got 33 million in project funds, and we had a really good interest rate. The bond market in 2016 was amazing. I can't remember exact interest rate. It was in the twos. The bond market has changed a little bit, but I did recently, we can get into this more, but met with our underwriter who did our urban renewal bonds, and he says he, it's still historically fairly cheap to borrow money. Rates are up a little bit, but historically, there's, it's still pretty cheap. So that's just a quick update on our 2E bond. Well, no, I think I have a little bit more. Let's see. Did we talk about the process? So we, to identify the four projects, yeah, I just kind of skipped a piece here. There was a fairly lengthy and deliberative process that included two different community task force that were put together by city council and many, many city council discussions. It was in your memo. I won't go over that. But we spent most of the year of 2016 talking about this before we, we, city council approved an ordinance setting the ballot language in that August of 2016. So fairly long process to get where we got with those four projects. I would, I would say, though, that this model of, of temporary tax increases with a bond, with very specific projects, so voters know what they're getting, has been successful. It's very successful in other communities. Denver does this on a very regular process. Their Better, Denver Better Bonds, or I can't remember what they're called. Do you remember, Rachel? Do you remember what theirs are called? Build Better Bonds, I think, Denver Bonds. So I, I would like to have a discussion with council on maybe a next step, if city council would, would like to extend this temporary sales tax increase for another period of time. I think it's best to, to ask voters to extend it before it expires. So if, if it's set to expire at the end of 2024, I think the optimal time would be to go next November, '23, for a, a potential ballot question. Of course, we would have to go through another process of identifying what projects you would like to fund, which we could do. Meeting with the underwriter for lunch last week or so, they're suggesting that we maybe potentially do some polling of our voters to see what their thoughts were on the 2E bond, what their support would be for a future bond, what their support might be for extension of a tax, just to get an idea. They, they think we should do that soon, by the end of the year, or the first of, of next year, if we're seriously want to consider a ballot question next November. So I'll, I'll just stop there and open it up for questions or discussion.
Okay. We will start with questioning from Councilwoman Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the update, Patrick. So, so when, when we did this back in 2016, we had the Dirt Task Force. They looked through, I think, 28 or so different pieces of our community. That, some of it was roads, some of it was the hook ramps. of it was the hook ramps, you know, C.Dot told us we couldn't do any developing up there unless we had the hook ramps. There's 58th, which is, you know, we can't develop that land up there unless C.Dot says we have to do something to 58th. The parks, the rec center. And, and it went through a process where it kind of vetted it, and then we, we got, like, they were ranked, and as council, we went through that and looked at kind of like the top, the top five, and even though Anderson Park was not in the very top, we felt like we needed to give something recreational back to the citizens, and that's kind of how we made that decision to balance those things to put on the ballot. Without re-engaging the Dirt Task Force, do you have a suggested process of kind of what we decide should be our priorities, or what we should look at? I mean, I personally feel like we should be looking at something like health, safety, and, and like welfare, so like our rec center sidewalks on 38th, we know we're going to need money there, you know, for the west side of 38th. So, like, do you have a, and, and also like some, some floodplain stuff, right, safety stuff? So do you have a suggestion of what process we go through? Do we reengage the Dirt, Dirt Task Force? I mean, that took a very long time. I don't feel like we have time in this timeline. What's your suggestion for that?
Yeah, I don't have a specific suggestion. I'm, I'm not sure if we need a, a full task force process, as we've done. We, we, we did that in 2017, and then again in 2016. We still have that list of projects that weren't funded through 2E, or that haven't been funded through other means. I think it's a fairly current list still. Staff in Public Works and Community Development, they do keep a very, I think I put in my memo, we probably have over, you know, $115 million worth of, of projects listed, either based on just maintenance needs or things that City Council has brought up, you know, 38th Avenue, like you said, we're looking at West. So all those things are on that list. I think we've gone through many different planning processes, I think, since 2016 that may indicate projects that kind of have risen to the priority list, but I don't think we have a specific suggestion right now. I don't know if we need a, a full task force to be put together again. I think public outreach is obviously important, but I think we could do it a different way.
Do we think, do we feel like we have enough feedback from the Let's Talk Resident Survey to try to kind of pinpoint some, some, some things that are, that are, that the residents are saying are important in, in that, in those conversations? And, and also, is it coming back as, as a consensus? Does it sound like there's some consensus on some things in those discussions?
I think there is. There's a lot of consensus, if I remember, and you guys heard some of the, the reports. We're not finished with every neighborhood, of course, but we have another East Wheat Ridge neighborhood coming up this next round. Traffics, neighborhood safe traffic issues are big. Trying to think if y'all remember from the, the reports. I know recently, we've, we've heard some drainage issues again, which in East Wheat Ridge, I was a little surprised, because I thought we had, if you remember years ago, we used to get a lot more complaints, and we made some improvements over there, but we're starting to hear, hear that again a little bit. Yeah, so I think we definitely need to, to look at planning processes and, and our engagement, community engagement processes, and, and listen and hear and see what's out there in the community survey that we did recently, too, has the information in that.
Yeah. Do you feel that we would use Wheat Ridge, What's Up Wheat Ridge as a, a polling type tool?
Definitely, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I was not on the DIAS, but I was on the community side while this list was being developed, and we were working hard to make sure that we could get a ballot measure passed, because it does take revenue to invest in our city. And a couple of things, I just want to call out, in your presentation, Patrick, I really appreciate you calling out that we've done well with this. I mean, we're, we're ahead of the schedule. We, I say we, you. You have been a good fiscal manager of the funds that the citizens have made available to you, and I think, other than I, you know, baseball fields, we've done a really good job. If anyone wants to talk about baseball fields, you can find me at Clancy's after this meeting. But, so I, I think the city has a good history of taking the funds that the citizens have entrusted in us, and being both fiscally conservative with them, but also putting them to good use in ways that are coming back to us in, in good ways. To Ms. Hoppe's questions, you know, since the Dirt Task Force was reconvened, it, it comes to my attention that there's just a lot of things that have changed. We do have the, the West of Kipling, 38th Avenue study coming forth, and that is something that was identified in the original Dirt Task Force as a concern, and that was, I don't know, 100 years ago, like 20 years ago?
Yes.
That problem has not been solved, and hopefully, we will forthcoming have good, good plans and recommendations from our communities. We're in the throes of a 44th Avenue subarea plan. We've recently adopted a Lutheran master plan. We've got tools like Let's Talk, as Ms. Hoppe pointed out. We also have recent community surveys. So we have a lot of data that, and recently adopted plans that I think weren't available last time we were looking at a ballot initiative. So I, from the DIAS, I feel comfortable looking to information that, that has been provided and adopted by Council recently to give us guidance on, to look at what's the buffet, but of course, we absolutely need to look to our community for polling and surveying to find out within that, like, what are the things that are, are most important to them, as well as what's the tolerance for funding that our community is willing to, to support. And some of my other work around polling, it's not a great financial environment right now for people to be super enthusiastic about taxing, so I'd love, I'd love us to look at a half cent, but I know Boulder, they're, they've been running the gamut of, is it, you know, a quarter, is it a half? So I think we should look at that. And then I think here on the DIAS, when the, the spectrum of current initiatives, recently adopted plans, is brought forward, I mean, I, I think we can probably, we, we can take some hot takes on that, and, and hopefully, that provides some guidance for us to do some polling this fall on that. But I guess my punchline is, as much as I was appreciative for our community service tonight to give us guidance on how to spend $160,000 with our community partners, I think we are, we, we have a lot of guidance from our community recently on how to spend $35 million, that with some polling and some good thoughtful discussions on the DIAS, hopefully, we can inform a good ballot initiative for next year.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item? We had a series of questions there in your, in your packet. Let's see if we have some consensus on this, on, on how to move forward. Number one, is bonding an effective model for funding critical infrastructure projects? Do we have consensus on that? See a show of hands, so that's a yes. Item number two, considering the current temporary sales and use tax increase of .5%, .05% will expire in 2024, should the city consider a ballot question to extend the tax for a certain period of time? Do we have consensus on that? And we have unanimous consensus on that. Item number three, should the city issue additional bonds for infrastructure projects? And we have consensus on that. And number four, should the city conduct polling to determine the community level of support for an extension of the temporary sales, use, the sales tax and additional bonding authority? And we have consensus to move, to move forward on that. Council, Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this, with the polling, though, I, I feel like the polling, you know, you can get a, a grab bag of, of responses if you don't have kind of a, you know, like a, hey, here are these things, you know, some focused questions, and so, you know, would we, would council have a, a discussion around, hey, here's your, here's your menu, what are some things you want to poll on, so that, you know, would that be the process of how we would go about that?
Yeah, we'd bring that back to council as a discussion point, and as I mentioned, and I think Ms. Hulteen mentioned, I think the timing is very important. I think our underwriters are suggesting maybe we wait till like January, if we want to do an initial poll. We could always do a follow-up poll, maybe later in the summer, before you pass the ordinance, if you actually want to take a ballot question. The last polling we did was in 2014, in preparation for the 2016 ballot question, and so, yeah, we would come back to council with an example and example questions, and get some direction from council. It's about $15,000-ish to do, to do this. Good news is, they have, a lot of the polling firms, there's several to pick from, but they, they use a lot of new technology these days, because since we're, most people are on cell phones, most people don't answer a phone call unless they know who it is these days. I know I don't. So there's, there's techniques around that, though, that it, it'll leave you a text message that, hey, this is the city of Wheat Ridge, we're at, you know, we, we want to know your opinions on, on something, so hopefully, that they'll call back. So there's a lot of new tools to get really good engagement.
And we have, we have funds appropriated for that?
Yeah, I can find the funds for that, yes.
All right. Councilor Hulteen.
So one more thing I just want to point out, because I love pointing out the obvious. We haven't really had a recent ballot initiative in our city, and so we don't really have a good sense of where our city is on these things. So I appreciate that we're looking at the polling to, to try and get a sense of, you know, who, who are we, because we have had a lot of turnover, and things have changed substantially within our community, and, you know, in the society at large, since we last did polling. So I, I appreciate that we're, we're looking at doing the polling, and I'm guessing it's going to take a couple rounds of polling to get a sense of where we are and what's important, but it's a good, it's a good start.
And Mary Ann just reminded me, we'll have our next, always, I don't know how to say it, is it biannual, bi, biannual survey, resident survey in next, next spring, right? Results usually, we get back in June or July, I think, so that would be another, I think, point of, of information.
Can we move that up at all? Is there any feasibility to accelerate that a little bit?
Yeah, typically, we take the questions to you all in March, and then they launch it pretty quickly, and then we get the, we get the report around the middle, end of May, but we can work with them if that's not, if that's not soon enough.
We, we may want to consider accelerating that, because that's data that might be helpful for us to have a little bit earlier than June of 2023 for looking at a ballot initiative.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Very good. Is there anything else that you need to?
No, that, that's terrific.
Understand on this item?
Yeah, just looking for some general direction tonight, so staff can start working on this. Obviously, nothing's decided this evening. We'll bring back more information as we move along.
Very good. And great news on being able to close those bonds out earlier than what we had anticipated, so, thank you. I'm not going to give you a rest, I'm going to go to staff reports. This is item number three, Mr. Goff.
I don't think I have anything else this evening, thanks.
Okay. We will go to elected officials matters. We've had some. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to reiterate that our annual celebration of the incorporation of Wheat Ridge is coming up in August, 12th, 13th, and 14th. The parade will be Saturday, August 13th. The registration is closing on July 30th, so if you or anyone that you know is interested in being a part of the parade, please sign up. As Councilmember Nosler Beck had mentioned, we are planning a District 4 meeting on Monday, August 29th, in the evening from 6:00 to about 7:30 or 8:00. We're looking forward to seeing residents, and we're planning, hopefully, having that at Anderson Park, and where the Carnation Festival will be again this year. I wanted to thank staff, the city, and, and all of my colleagues for supporting the Carnation Festival this year, and, you know, it's going to be a really great time, a little under three weeks, and crazy busy. I also wanted to thank Audacity Lounge for having a Back Alley Carnival this last weekend. It was really fun. Got to meet several business owners in the, on the 38th Avenue in Teller area. It was a great event, the kids loved it. We had Russell from Bolt Athletics in the dunk tank that my kids were able to dunk a couple of times, so it was a real good time, and thank you.
Thank you. Additional elected officials matters? Before we adjourn, Councilor Hulteen.
I never run out of things to talk about that I love about our city. So a couple of things, nobody has mentioned that a week from tomorrow night is Neighbor's Night Out citywide, and we are mixing it up this year and doing it by district. Councilmember Omen and I are super excited to host at Randall Park from 4:00 to 7:00. We are going to have a bouncy castle, we've got pinatas, the Ad-Ats are going to be providing free rides on their little cycle trooper, and I hope everyone has a chance to get out and come, come, come to your neighborhood, Neighbor's Nights Out. It's a really great way to, to connect with neighbors, bug your city council people while you've, you know, holding them hostage in the park, so. And then I just want to mention, the following night, on the 3rd, we are kicking the Deep Dive Club back into action. This is just a civic social club, and it's an opportunity to get together, talk about things that matter outside of the murky depths of social media, and rather face-to-face with our neighbors. So we'll be at New Image Brewing from 7:00 to 9:00 on Wednesday, the 3rd, and the theme is Hello, My Name Is. It's a chance to get re-inquainted, but the idea is that we have a lot of really big policy things coming up in the next year, and it's important to be able to have a good civic dialogue about the issues we care about. We don't have to agree, but we have to be able to find a space to talk about them, so that we can all come together and figure out what's best for the city. So we hope to see you at Neighbor's Night Out on Tuesday, and then at Deep Dive Club on Wednesday. It's going to be a fun week next week.
Thank you. Any additional elected officials matters? Okay, we will be back here in council chambers one week from tonight, on August the 1st, at 6:30. So, numerous business to come before our study session. We will stand adjourned. Please drive safely and have a great week.